We have new microphones, so I'm testing this out. Is that a good distance? Can you hear me in the back? Okay. The mission of the Free Hill Township School District is to honor and support every learner every day on the journey to become curious and engaged members of a diverse global community. A notice listing the time, date, and place of this meeting was posted on the public bulletin board of all Free Hill Township Schools, on the entrance door to the administrative offices of the Board of Education, on the district website, at the office of the Free Hill Township Clerk, and published in the Asbury Park Press on January 7th, 2024. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call, Mr. DeVito?
Ms. Brand? Ms. Leno? Mr. Georgoula?
Here.
Mrs. O'Sullivan?
President.
Mrs. Spiller?
Here.
Mrs. Van Nettoli?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Lambert? Mr. Amoroso?
Here. Thank you. Could I get a motion for the approval of the September 24th regular meeting minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Did we have any absences? Okay. All right, Communications, Mr. DeVito?
For Communications, we have enrollments. For June of 2024, we had 3,490 students. September of '24, we had 3,406. And compared to September of '23 was 3,453.
Thank you very much. President's remarks. I will keep my remarks very brief. But I heard that the teachers had a wonderful time yesterday. I wanted to stop by, but I had a wedding. But I heard that it went very well. And I'm sorry, I couldn't be there. Mrs. Lambert's on vacation. Oh, good. Oh, good, Mary. Excellent.
Can you hear me? Or do I have to put a close up? It was great to see our staff collaborating, to see, you know, our teachers energized about what they're delivering to our children. You also saw some of the challenges that they're facing, which are very real. And I'm grateful that they are working with administration to make this happen for our kids. Good things.
Great. Thank you, Mary. Thanks for attending. Okay, I wanted to remind the board also, next week is the New Jersey School Boards Convention. By a show of hands, how many people are planning to go to at least a seminar? Three. So I would encourage any of you, even if you want to drive down for a half a day or whatever, look through the agenda. If there's a training that you think interests you, or if there's an area of boardsmanship that you think you need work on, or there's some very good seminars, and you don't necessarily have to stay down there. But there's some very good meetings to go to, so I want to remind everyone to take a look at that. There's carpool, carpool things going on. Excellent. I also wanted to wish our two incumbents good luck on the election, because we won't have another meeting until afterwards. So I wish you both the best of luck. And the last thing I wanted to mention is just, we'll be discussing tonight, Mr. Dixtein will be discussing our CUSAC results. I know there were some questions on that, and I know the board has been poring over the data, asking a lot of questions. We do understand that the way that, you know, science is weighted, there is a little bit of a flaw in the formula. But for me, and I've said to some of my other board members, I feel like as long as we understand what we're doing in our district, and we know where our weaknesses are, and we're recognizing them and working on them, I think that's the positive thing. This is a metric. It's a result. It is important. But, you know, it doesn't necessarily help us by looking at that data. We have our own data that we know that we need to work on, and I'll let Mr. Dixtein elaborate more on that. But the board has been looking into that issue. Other than that, we have two meetings left until the end of the year, which is unbelievable. It's kind of, I can't even believe it. There's one meeting in November and one in December. So we have a lot of work to do before the end of the year. But I think that's the end of my report. Mr. Dixtein?
I'll start with the bullying investigation report. Since our last meeting, there were six reports of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Out of those six, four were founded and two were unfounded. Next, I'm going to review the results of our self-assessment for determining grades under the state harassment, intimidation, and bullying law. Just to give you a background, this is a self-assessment of compliance, meaning did we meet the criteria in which the state provides in the self-assessment, meaning meet the letter of what the law intends. This is done by school safety teams in each building. Each school safety team is led by the school counselor. There's an administrator and at least one teacher, if not more than one teacher, who sit down and look back at the year and determine through a self-assessment each of the elements that are assessed. This year is the first year, I believe, that all of our school teams assess themselves at a score of 78, which is the maximum number. And that is due in large part to the work that's been done across the district with ensuring, hipster plays a significant role in that, in ensuring that we are in compliance with what the expectation is of that law. CUSAC results, I am pleased to report that personnel, so CUSAC, your placement, it's a state monitoring. For those that are here in the audience, our monitoring was last school year. We just got the results in October, this month. The county office comes in and assesses. A lot of it is compliance. Some of it is performance in various categories. So in order to be highly effective, you're required to have an 80, and each area is assessed individually. So in personnel, operations, and governance, we received perfect scores of 100. Fiscal management, 96%, one indicator that we self-assessed. And also the county, once you self-assess, they don't check. They don't give you the score. Instruction and program, everything received a perfect score. Our achievement data, that's plugged in and provided by the state, yielded in that category a 78%. I wanted to review quickly the criteria in which they report. So for a K-8 district, ELA achievement, the overall performance proficiency rate, and the community in this board is educated on that data, because it's 22-23 test data. So that's already been presented, and we've gone through it. Now it's the conversion of that data for the purposes of CUSAC. So this isn't new. It's just seeing it as a metric used for CUSAC. Also, there were some questions, and I want to, I think they're good ones to share that I was asked by the board, which was, we've gotten above 80 in the past. The last time we were assessed was 2017, using 2015, 2016 NJSLA data, pre-COVID. 2021, 2020, we took the waiver. We didn't go through CUSAC. So this is the first monitoring in six years. And in 2017, that was a different process. The DPRs were different than they are currently. So the way that the state calculates, and I'm going to point out some things that are positive about this data as well. Out of 10 points, they use criteria for three different areas, each worth 10 points. ELA achievement, so the overall proficiency rate of all students in the school district, for ELA, 10 points; for math, 10 points; for science, 10 points. And now I'm going to tell you why that's flawed. ELA is assessed in grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Math is assessed in 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Given equal weight to those is an assessment in science that's given to students in grades 5 and 8. Equal weight. The state average on that science assessment is very poor. And that holds equal weight to ELA and math. So 5.6 out of 10 for ELA achievement, 5.1 out of 10 for math achievement, 2.5 out of 10 for science. What I'm proud to report in these results, in our achievement, is what we as educators focus on, which is our growth of our students. So the next three criteria is academic progress in ELA, academic progress in math, so our students' progress across the grades. And finally, so those are 8.2 out of 10, and 8 out of 10, which is very impressive. And the last is our increase in performance, so our growth of our subgroups. And for those who come to board meetings in the board, you're aware of all the different subgroups, race, ethnicity, free and reduced lunch, special education, 504, homeless. That growth was 8.2 out of 10 as well. So our growth of our students has been significant among ELA math and among our subgroups. And if that continues, then our, eventually your achievement catches up as well. We also, the state has, when we recognize this issue of basically lack of fairness in the way that the DPRs are calculated for instruction and program, there was some conversation among every, CUSAC is three, there's cohort A, B, and C, I believe, three? And the state is divided into cohort A, B, and C. So Monmouth County basically is in thirds, and you get CUSAC'd by the county in your cohort group. So there was conversation among our cohort group that we were disappointed in understanding that when we got our IMP scores, that they reflected what they did in this lack of fairness. And even when you look at the science. So there was some advocacy work done. My colleague and Howell, who's the president of our superintendent's roundtable, started to talk to people in Monmouth County. I reached out to Burlington County, I believe, and another colleague reached out to Mercer County. Word spread so fast that across the state, there was a meeting with a significant number of districts. What we learned is 75% of districts in our cohort did not achieve 80% in IMP instruction and program, which if 75% of districts are not passing that within 80, the system seems to be flawed. So there was some advocacy work done. At the State Board of Ed level, there was testimony in front of the board by some of my colleagues. And when the state legislators or the state board looks to change code, they have a period of open public comment, and they have to publish the revisions so that we can comment on those. I have the revisions to how they would calculate instruction and program. If we were going to go through that process, not even the current group, they won't implement it until next year's cohort. So if we were going through this, we would have gotten above an 80% in instruction and program, and would have been highly performing in instruction and program. So all of that, while we do need to look, I consider our scores, there is a level of fairness that is not in the manner in which instruction and program is assessed. Yes?
Now, Neil, when you say that the revise, have those been adopted yet? Is that, is that the way it'll look going forward, or we don't know that?
It's in the comment period now. So it just let, the broadcast that came out this week included the draft. So first, they have to release it. You know the process. Public comment before the next state board meeting, and then they can adopt it. But this takes, so it does exactly what I said. It maintains the 10 points, which I don't necessarily disagree with. In the ELA and the math achievement overall, it reduces the science by half, and it takes those five points and distributes them to growth among ELA and math.
No. And then the second one is just a question of clarification. When you said 78%, when I look at the IMP, the numbers like lower than that on the, on the report I have, is that because that's, that's just the state numbers that they provided, and we have a whole set of other instruction and programming numbers?
Is it what you asked me about the district score versus the county score? Or you mean something different?
The district performance review.
Right. Is that the counties, is that the difference that you asked me about from the county score and the district score? That you saw 40% and then you saw 78%?
No, I saw 40% and 30. It's the single accountability continuum district performance review. It was like the cover sheet?
Yes. So what Mary is asking about is there's two, there's two steps to CUSAC. Prior to the county office arriving in the district to do the onsite evaluation, we have to sit and do a self-evaluation. So we have to go through, we have to collect the documentation of what we're going to show the county to prove or disprove that we have that criteria. When we do that, the 40% of IMP, 40 or 60? The 60? 60% of IMP that's related to achievement, we don't have that data, so we can't include it on our district score. So when it goes in, our district score was 40%, because we gave ourselves credit for everything we could. So it's 100 minus the 60 for the achievement that we didn't have, is the 40. So that's why it shows 40 for the district, because we don't have that data to report ourselves. The county reports that on the final, and that's why theirs says 78 and ours says 40.
Okay. Sure.
So how do you, how do we know which one is lower? Measurement from CUSAC?
Or that all the county is just not doing as well as we all should be?
Probably a combination. It's not that we don't recognize and discussed in our 22-23 test review, a test data review, that our, our levels of growth are, and continue. We have 23-24, which you'll get at the next meeting. Our levels of growth continue to be impressive because of the work that our teachers are doing and using data to remediate the achievement scores. However, the issue, I would say it's CUSAC in large part because when they, when they revise, to make it more equitable, we pass. And many districts will. Some won't still, but we will. And that points out to me, that's, if I point out one thing, it's science should not be equally weighted when you're talking about two grade levels of students that take the science test, and it's equally weighted as sixth grade levels that take ELA and math. And at the state level, it's not fair. And at the state level, which I don't want to go down that road, but the test is not, I don't think the test is, is a reliable measure any longer, because the state average is significantly low. And I'm going to talk about a grade that's not with us. So the 11th grade science test, 45% of the state of New Jersey is at a level one. So where's the accountability on the, the design of the test on the state level?
That's what I was going to get at. The balance, what he's saying, there is, the curriculum that we're teaching isn't preparing our students for that test. It's very clear.
As a high school teacher, I will tell you, the kids come in and they're like, I'm, I'm just putting down anything. They don't even care. So you probably have kids that are actually trying in, in the elementary school, but at high school, they're...
So, so for us in the testing in grades 3 through 8, more, it's less of our kids making a conscious choice to say, I'm not going to put effort into this, and more of test fatigue, right? I remember getting the old California test books, and the first thing I did was I opened the book to see how long the passage was going to be. Because there's, there's readability of, I mean, there's a lot of factors. So I don't know, of course, I'm sure in grades 3 through 8, we have some kids who, I don't know, is mindful of choice as high school, but they, they are not. Nobody wants to come in and take an assessment. I don't, I don't want to come in and take, nobody wants to come in and spend their time in school taking a multi-day assessment. That, that's hours, right? So you have kids that, like I said, test fatigue. You have some, I mean, we're measuring kids, some kids who, who have programs specifically because they're not meeting grade level standards, but are still held to grade level standards on these tests. So that's a flaw. And then you do have some kids who just, whether they realize it or not, are not putting the effort that reflects their true ability for one reason or another. From everything from a bad day, not feeling well. I'm sure we have some that are mindfully making the choice not to, but fewer than a high school, I think.
I agree. So Jeff and I had a conversation with Becky the other day regarding this year's, you know, NJSLA, and specifically science-related, and the concern about, you know, not only our passing rate, but the state passing rate being way below even what we're at, and how not necessarily thinking that the test is very aligned to the standards. And one of the questions we asked was, you know, the, the test is the test, and the standards are the standards. You know, from our perspective, are we going to be able to test? And Becky said yes. You know, how kids are doing based on what we're teaching them? Because that's something I would be more interested in. Then if we're having a 19% passing rate in the state, then obviously there's a problem with either the test standards or the combination of both.
Correct.
We're teaching our kids based on our curriculum that we wrote on our interpretation of the standards. I'd be more interested in seeing the test results from that than anything coming from a test where only 19% of the state is passing.
Middle school content area, science and social, actually across the board, not just science and social studies. Language arts, math, science, and social studies in the middle school have been working since last year and developing common assessments. So those would give data in our own district for the, for our measurement of, the attainment of standards based on our delivery of the curriculum.
Okay. I think that'll be a lot more valuable.
I ask something on the science, because I'm still unclear of the timing of this. Because I know that this is, this is last year's data or the year before?
22-23.
So two years ago. So it's based, I don't know, and maybe you or Jeff or somebody knows, when did we get the new science standards? I feel like we didn't even have the new standards when we took the test on the new standards.
Look from grades one to four. Was that cohort ready for that test anyway?
Exactly.
Standards change. That's why I think it's misaligned.
Yeah.
Becky was saying that there is a common feeling about it not being aligned, standards. Okay. But was it based on, do you know?
If it's based on timing or just based on, because I know we revised ours, didn't we? Like, I just want to make sure that our revisions are...
The standards were implemented in the 22-23 school year.
I was going to say, I think it's that year. Yeah.
So how would any, how would anyone from grade 1, 2, 3, and 4 that took the test in fifth grade have even been taught that, that criteria?
Yeah.
I'm just saying that that's why it's, it's a metric, but it's flawed.
I think, though, historically, science has been low in the state. So I think the test is flawed.
I'm not denying that that's a problem. It needs to be addressed. But this measurement of it, I mean, we take it for what it's worth. As long as we know what's going on in our district, and we know how we can fix our problems, I think that's way more important. It's not that this isn't important, but I think we have to look at it for what it is.
And you know already from the data, from our pre, our, our prior year's assessments, the work that's been done to address those issues that we see with achievement. We have the most revised edition of Big Ideas in the Middle School, which is a significant shift. Having a child in middle school, the rigor of the most recent, the most recent publication date, most recent copyright is, the rigor is lifted. So you should see it there. There's spirals in math in middle school. There's common assessments for every unit of math in middle school. ELA, the, in elementary school, foundational reading program is changed, and visions in grades 3, 4, and 5. Now, that's not a magic bullet. It's not going to change for next year. It takes time after program implementation to see the results. I read in it personalized, like, there's a lot of work that's been done that we will see that, and, and already we're seeing growth. So again, the achievement should catch up.
How much, how much of this, I, I guess we have to make a district improvement plan, or how much of that are we already engaged in?
We are. So Becky's going to write three goals. One for math, one for ELA, one for science, that already reflects work that we're doing. Because you're seeing, you're writing an improvement plan for achievement, but you're showing us our students are growing at the same time. So we're doing something right. It just takes time to catch up. Oh, yes, I didn't put on the agenda, but every year in the month of October, we have Respect Week, and we have School Safety, School Violence Awareness Week. So Dr. Breathour is required. So Dr. Breathour is required at a board meeting to go through the activities, an overview of the activities that each of our schools are doing for recognition of those weeks.
So it was nice to see this year with our Donovan School in each of our elementary schools, the five elementary schools came together and created the week of respect. If you passed the bulletin board, it was the black poster. And then next week is the school safety week. And so they align themselves in the five elementary schools. In in addition to acknowledging World Bullying Prevention Day by wearing blue, some of our, the morning meetings in the elementary school focused on that, you know, week of respect with respect for yourself, respect for your community, respect for others. School Safety Week, we're focusing on prevention and maintaining a safe and healthy environment. I'm trying to piggyback and do both at the same time, so it ranges from quote of the day, challenges of the day in the middle school, like challenging you to be a respectful student in this way, challenging you to be a respectful child in this way, right, and and giving some goals. Some read alouds, some videos, a poster contest for Respect Week, we're also doing a school safety poster contest, and even our littlest guys at the ECLC, they were reading their book about the world needs more purple schools, which they do. And I love purple, and then talking about the themes of kindness, and they'll do the same thing for school safety. And I just, there was one other thing I wanted to, oh, and then Detective Ketteler and Detective Rayburg from the Freo Township Police, they will be working together, we have already started. We are presenting internet safety lessons and online safety to all fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade students. So we already started doing that, and letters will go home to the parents to just talk about some of the topics. It's it's pretty heavy, but when we ask who has a cell phone, most kids raise their hands. And then we are going to do a hybrid parent night, hopefully in November, modeling off pace. So having the mix between an in-person and and a Google Meet feature where we could give the parents what they need to to keep their kids safe and respectful. And that's it.
Excellent. And I think Bob, the budget calendar.
Yeah, that is our annual CUSAC requirement for the board actually publishing their agenda. And then minutes what our budget counts for the year, nothing, it's very similar to what it's been the past four or five years. It's just an outline of, you know, we start the process end of September, beginning of October. There's a lot of work that gets done between now and winter break. And then once the new board's in place in January, you set a new calendar, and then we have our budget meetings in February. We approve a tentative budget in March and then a final budget in April. So nothing's changed unless the state changes the calendar at some point in time between now and.
And you need to remind our bargaining units that we can encumber a future board and that we have to wait until January to do any business.
We have that conversation, they're aware.
Okay, good, thank you. Do we have any other administration? All right, this is the first opportunity for public participant, participation on agenda items only. If anyone wishes to address the board, please write your name and address on the sign in sheet and state your name for the record. Statements are limited to three minutes and should not be abusive, obscene or defamatory in nature. Do we have any takers? There'll be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting, we have two. This is just agenda items. Seeing none, then we'll move on to Personnel Policy and Communications, Mr. Gargula.
Good evening. Today we did meet. In addition to the agenda items, we also had a discussion of a request for duration of personal days. I would like to move the following item, items, second reading of policy. Number four, retirement as listed. Number five, resignations as listed. Number six, new employment as listed. Number seven, adjust start date as listed. Number eight, establish start date, new employment as listed. Nine, establish start date, change of assignment salary adjustment as listed. Ten, change of assignment salary adjustment as listed. Eleven, temporary change of assignment salary adjustment as listed. Twelve, extend temporary change of assignment slash salary adjustment as listed. Thirteen, extend long-term assignments as listed. Fourteen, leaves of absences as listed. Fifteen, unpaid days as listed. Sixteen, translator interpreter as listed. Seventeen, affirm bullying investigation findings as listed. Eighteen, additional compensation, safety care training as listed. Nineteen, HIB district and school grades twenty twenty three through twenty twenty four school year. Number twenty, student teacher practicum observation placement as listed. Twenty one, certified substitutes as listed. Twenty two, non-certified substitutes as listed. Twenty three, volunteer as listed. Twenty four, salary adjustments as listed. That's it.
Do I have a second? Discussion and questions?
I just want to share with the group, with our board that for our interviews for our supervisor positions, while we did not find a successful candidate for supervisor of ELA and social studies, the process for supervisor of instruction was rigorous. We had a full day every thirty minutes of interviews. And reassuring, and what should be reassuring to the board, is out of five candidates who returned for a second interview, four of those candidates were internal candidates. And what we continue to report to the board is when we do these interviews, pretty consistently, our own staff, those that were, that are here already in our district, rise to the top each and every time.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any other questions for policy? Seeing none, can I get a roll call?
Mrs. Brand? Mrs. Cosalina? Mr. Ojula?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Spieller? Mrs. Vanatoli?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? And Mr. Amerosso?
Yes. Thank you. Curriculum Committee, Mr. Williams?
Good evening, Curriculum Committee met last Friday, October eleventh via Zoom. Attending, attending the meeting was myself, Board Member Vanatoli and Assistant Superintendent Becky Montgomery. We reviewed the items on the agenda, or we discussed the agenda, it wasn't quite out yet, but we left it open to questions, which there were none. We did a preview of the NJSLA data presentation, ELA, the sixty three point seven percent of students in grades three to five met or exceeded expectations. A plus one point one percent increase, uh, increase from last year in math. Fifty six point seven percent of students in grades three through five meet or exceed the expectations. Point zero seven percent increase from last year in science. Twenty four point six percent of our fifth to the eighth grade student grader, eighth graders were proficient or advanced proficient, which unfortunately is a four point three percent decrease from last year. And again, we discussed the issues that we have with the testing, and at the November meeting, Becky Montgomery will go into much more detail and provide a presentation on NJSLA. High intensity tutoring, tutoring grant update, the state has allocated an additional a hundred, I'm sorry, eighteen thousand four hundred dollars to our district to continue our high impact tutoring through the school year and an extension of last year's hit grant. And we will use this allocation of funds to focus on tutoring for fourth grade students across the district. Do you want to provide an update on iReady? So the staff received training on the early release of professional development on September twenty six about how to deliver the diagnostic. The diagnostic window is wrapping up on Friday, October eighteenth. And as of Friday, the eleventh, ninety six percent of students have finished the reading test and ninety five percent have completed the math. Makeups will continue through next week. We have iReady, we have an iReady Professional Development Day scheduled on Monday for all K, scheduled on Monday for all K through eight teachers around analyzing the diagnostic data and utilizing the personalized instructional pathways for students in the iReady platform. Feedback from teachers have been very positive, and the assessment process has been much smoother than math, which we hope was going to be the case so far, early returns is stating that it had, that it is. And parents will receive the iReady parent reports as well as access to the student scores in the Lincoln Parental Portal in the upcoming weeks. The only other thing that I have is I want to move item number three as listed, home instruction. That's all I have.
Thank you, do we have a second? Do we have any questions for Jeff? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Finance, facilities and transportation, Mrs. Cosalina?
We did meet this evening, present were Renata Brand, Bob DeVita.
Oh, sorry. Neil Dixteem and myself. We discussed a number of items, and I actually have a sheet today because it was a lot. We received an LDS update. The building envelope specialist issued a report that ruled out the roof as the cause of the mold. We have a company onsite cleaning the UVs and ducts in the building this week. A Hera testing, that's the testing company, was onsite today to start to develop the specs for a bait tech to follow for the remediation. And we've discussed other maintenance things being done in the building to, you know, make sure that once we return our kids to the building, it's as close to pristine as possible. Truck, we discussed a truck for property services. Apparently, our salt truck has seen better days. And the engine has decided that it may not last the winter. So we do need to replace that vehicle, I I think that's on the agenda tonight, right? We also discussed the freezer at C, at Barklow. This is where we keep our food services stocked, and unfortunately, that also has decided that it has given the district enough of its life. So that also needs to be replaced. We also discussed the referendum progress. The Department of Education has started to approve some of the applications. Neil and Bob met with our PR specialist that's putting together the information plan for the district on the referendum. We discussed October, November being a data gathering and development of a communications committee that will take place. There'll be more information on that forthcoming. We discussed a video shoot sometime in October, early November, so that we can see some of the needs in our building, what they look like. And we also discussed that in November, December, we think we'll be ready to share some material and information with the community. And then we discussed that January seems to be the time that we would do kickoff meetings. And then we discussed any questions we had on the agenda. Any questions?
This is the question, facilities related, and it's actually kind of also directed at Neil. In your, in your, I just kind of, what I've heard throughout the Donovan area, a couple of parents, again, it could be a timing issue, they don't see a lot of activity going on in Donovan. When you do your weekly reports, like what Barry kind of said, and Hero was here on Wednesday, this so and so company was here, just so they kind of know that there's companies coming in, they may not actually see them there.
I share that, it's just that until this week, there was nobody there except.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so this week's update will, yeah, today's update will include, next, this week's update will include that they're onsite. So this, this last week's, what I send to the board is exactly what I send to the community. So they'll know this week that, they knew that the, what's the name of the company? No, the HVAC. I can't think of the name. The HVAC company, Advanced, that they're, they knew they were coming, I'll confirm that they were here and how many units they did as work is being completed, they'll get that, yeah.
Again, it could be a timing issue, because again, with the way there's a lot of houses populated, so people look out the windows, they don't see anything.
Correct, but we did focus upon, but we also did focus on that the time upfront is going to be spent on, as required by our insurance company, that investigation of the cause and ruling out the roof as a potential cause. Once the work begins, which is going to start, it's, it, we anticipate the movement to be rather quick.
The only work that happened the last, two weeks ago, for two days, we had a representative from WJ, if they're actually performing, this is called nuclear testing, and they're looking for, they test for hydrogen in the roof, and if they find any anomalies, then they come back. And there was about two percent of the roof, they thought might have anomalies in it. Then they came back the following week, which was last Monday and Tuesday, and they came with a roofing contractor, and they actually drilled core samples to the roof, and they took the cores out, and they took pictures, and they now, you know, did analysis on them, and they were all dry. So you had a total of two people doing work there in the last two weeks, so you're going to see one extra truck there. I mean, I've been in the building, property service has been in the building, we've had some other, you know, contractors working, other issues in one of the wings not impacted. But yeah, so they, what they've seen is correct. It was only two people that were required to do that work, and it took two weeks to do it.
Sure, I think, I guess maybe the, I guess, again, you're talking about a handful of parents that might have, they're thinking they're going to see people there around the clock. And I'm not saying they're wrong for thinking, I would never say they're wrong for thinking that. But at the end of the day, I think the more, like, what Barry, kind of the beginning of Mary thought, we could throw that in, those weekly updates. That would go a long way with that type of stuff.
I have a question about that roof report. I read through it, and I apologize for not calling you earlier, because I, we just got it, I went through the whole thing. My only concern with that report is it doesn't focus at all on temperature. It only focuses on whether they found humidity. And my intuition tells me, and I could be wrong, but I'd like to know why the black roof would get very hot, and that could change the ambient temperature of the wood on the inside. Now we have a white roof, which is colder, which would give a different result, and I don't see any temperature testing. I'm kind of concerned about that. And if the disclaimer at the end says, if any new data should arise, it could alter our interpretation of these results. So I, just, the engineer in me is saying, maybe we should go back to them and say, is it worth looking at the temperature testing? Because to me, that has some impact on what's going on in the building. Maybe it's fine, but the fact that it isn't there makes me a little nervous. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Because it, like you said, it came late this afternoon, I thought there was a, well, I don't know, I know that there was no specific temperature testing. I did think they, I do think there was a comment specifically, and then it said they don't attribute it to the color of the roof and a comment of temperature. So they did, correct, I didn't see a test for it, but they drew a conclusion. And I don't know what that conclusion is based on, because I didn't get to read it comprehensively. But they did draw a conclusion that the color of the roof and the temperature were not a factor. But again, I, I didn't read it to know why, what drew them to that conclusion.
I would feel better if there was, I know you, it's very hard to do this, because you have to be there in August with a probe on the roof and a probe on the inside, and then you have to be there, and you might have to do it on a black roof and then a white roof to to try to get an analysis, but I don't know. That's the only thing that makes me nervous, because obviously, we don't want a recurrence. And we're assuming now that there's no issue with the roof, but do we really know that a hundred percent?
I'm going to say what I've said a million times, it's happened in schools across the state, all this summer, all last summer, all the summer prior to that. I'm pretty sure it happened here years ago, too. So it's. So what I, I've said numerous times, not only did it happen in our district this year, it happened in a lot of other places across the state. I know Mr. Dixteem shared with my committee today that he's spoken to a number of the superintendents, and they've said, oh, yeah, we've had it this year, we had it last year. You know, it's happened, we've had mold at Katina years and years ago on the carpets on a hot rainy weekend where it happened, so you know, it happens, it's because we pull fresh air in. And the NJEA through WECC, who's our environmental consultant, gave us some information, some things to try next summer, including closing all the dampers, and we've had conversations with the architect on things that we could do to lessen the fresh air intake when the buildings aren't occupied. Because again, as we've discussed, those UVs are sized for a full classroom of people. In the summertime, when there's nobody there, they're now oversized, and they're producing too much conditioning, even when they come on in unoccupied mode.
Just my thoughts.
Just my thoughts when I read the report.
Yeah, the guy from Trumpco said to me, your roof might not be a hundred and forty degrees, it's a hundred and ten. I think that's still hot up to evaporate water.
I'm not really, my thought wasn't really about the roof, it was the wood on the inside of the roof. If the temperature mattered for the growth of molds, if that ambient temperature was in a window where mold would grow maybe on eighty degrees and not on ninety degrees, for example. You know what I mean? I was, because we have to consider the fact that we got a new roof and then we have this specifically on those ceilings. You have to look at the possibility that maybe they're somewhat related. Maybe not, but it's just that that report didn't focus at all on temperature. That's all I'm saying. So we pay money for those reports and I, maybe we should at least ask the question.
We're supposed to have a final debriefing meeting with them, they haven't scheduled.
Maybe just ask them why they feel that can be neglected. Okay, that was my only comment on that.
Well, I think what they were trying to rule out is from a previous conversation. If the material inside the roof is wet, the moisture would sink down and it would make your wood deck, your wood ceiling wet. So if the roof is dry, that's not causing moisture in the wood.
No doubt, there's an importance to determine whether there was water in those layers. I totally get that. My theory was just if the wood on the surface of the interior of the room was changing temperature, could that add to the growth of mold or not? Does it matter?
When the UV is blowing cold, cool, moist air on it, humid air, plus the humidity is already in the room. That's, again, we, I think we had some discussions. When we had the contractors come in and they, they put the meters into the wood next to the UV, right where the air is blowing out, there was more moisture in the wood there than it was as you went further away through the classroom where the UV is not blowing directly on it.
I remember that.
So. If it was uniform throughout the room, then again, your roof might have been the culprit. There might have been, the interior of the roof might have been wet, and, but that wasn't the case.
Okay, Mrs. Cosalina, I think we're done with our questions.
Can I also get a copy of that report? Okay. All right. I would like to move the number three, bills and claims, which were reviewed by Jeff, correct?
Yes.
For a total of five million one hundred and five thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-two cents. I would like to move number four, travel and related expenses as listed. Five, transfers as listed. Six, PTO donations and honoraria as listed. Thank you to the LDS PTO and to Jersey Freeze for the donations. Number eight, the change order for HVAC replacement at West Freehold School as listed. Number nine, the contract with MAP Restaurant Supplies as listed. Did I miss seven? Okay, number seven, the M O E S C translation services as listed. Sorry, it was cut off. Number ten, the contract with Nielsen Ford as listed. And number eleven, the approval, the approved withdrawal of funds from maintenance reserves as listed.
Okay. That's it? Second? Any other questions for finance? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, old business? Any new business?
Another great apartment game. You can go Friday, I guess, give or take. Yeah. Two weeks. Another great night for, you know, both the bodies to get together. It was a great night, the weather cooperated. Which is always good.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think both games were very competitive, right? I think they were both very close and it was exciting. Kids have a great time playing, parents have a great time watching. You have kids from years past come back to see their team and whether they.
It's like a homecoming in a store. Yeah. And I'll let the Barklow parent announce who won both games.
Barklow won. Barklow won.
Excellent. Excellent. And also, we'd like to welcome Melissa Dansbury, because now that we voted, you're officially an employee. So congratulations. Sometimes we do that too early and we haven't voted yet. I get a little nervous. I'm just kidding. All right, so let's see where we are now. So I have no further remarks. We'll go right into public participation of any type. And this is the second opportunity for public participation. So if anyone wishes to address the board, please write your name and address on our sign-in sheet and state your name for the record. Statements are limited to three minutes and should not be abusive, obscene, or defamatory in nature.
I'm sorry.